Okay, thank you. Then the first item on our agenda for new business is a Level 3 site plan and conditional use application. 175 Auburn Street, Portland Public Schools is our applicant. And Jean Fraser, if you could lead us off, please. Thank you.
So I will just recap on the project as this is a final hearing on it. So the review and overview is that the Education Department is proposing two additions to the Lyssith Elementary School totaling 14,476 square feet in total. These are to enhance the support facilities where the school are not creating additional employment or student population. The school extension is a conditional use in the R2 residential zone and therefore is subject to both site plan and conditional use standards. The additions impact the immediate site layout and the stormwater management of the site and those in turn have been designed to integrate with the ongoing improvements of the wider campus that were subject to a previous site plan approval. I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. Just to confirm that we have not received any public comments as of this moment, I don't believe. So the proposals, I'll just summarize quickly. So there's two additions. The smaller addition, and I know the applicant will be going through this in more detail, is at the front of the school to provide office and reception space. That has in turn necessitated the slight relocation of the bus drop-off lane that goes around the front of the school. That's been discussed in detail with both the fire department and DPW and others. And the final plan that you have before you has created a good fire access and pedestrian safety issues have also been addressed. And in fact, I think reviewers considered this an improvement over the originally approved plan for that particular area. And then the larger addition is at the back for a gym and library that's located between two existing wings on the north side of the existing school. It's connected by a landscaped courtyard to the school and that necessitated the relocation of the fire access lane on the north boundary of the school site. And we'll come back to that in a minute because that's really the only aspect of the proposal where staff suggested some additional measures to address both the conditional use and the site plan standards. So at the workshop in March, you had, there were some issues that were raised, one of which was around lighting to address SEPTED issues. And five new light poles have been added around the front and around the side of the school on the athletic field side. And the applicant has also widened a number of the pathways in and to the site, eight feet in width, as they indicated they were willing to do so that it, those pathways can form part of the neighborhood byways and the Portland Trail system, which is discussed in some detail in the report. As a result of both the additions and the widening of the paths, the impervious surface has increased over the existing school. And there was a second round of calculations done to ensure that the widened pathways could be accommodated in terms of stormwater treatment by the proposed system. And you'll see there's a confirmation from our peer engineer that all is well on that score. And just as a note really, that the project is not just introducing these new building additions and associated landscaping and lighting, but they're also carrying out not only the stormwater improvements that were previously approved at the western end, but also the lane and the parking realignment and the pedestrian safety improvements in the vicinity of Junior Street. I won't dwell on this, but there is a page, it's attachment six in the report, that just covers the previous approvals and how they've partly been implemented. And so this phase that you're looking at now is really kind of a Phase 2, is one small section to be completed as a Phase 3. Just coming back to public comments and it ties in with what I was saying about the widened pathways. Portland Trails did comment at the workshop and has been in discussion with planning staff to develop what's shown in the report as the Campus Connections Plan, which shows how the broader strategic network and the local network for the school kind of interrelate. And I'm sure we can answer questions on that if there are any. So just coming to the conditions. I mean, overall, the project really is very coordinated, has integrated well into the approved, with the approved improvements from before, includes much-needed infrastructure improvements, and it does meet overall the conditional use and site plan standards in the eyes of the reviewers and staff. There are four minor conditions of approval that are suggested. Those relate to the lighting details, some notes on the site plan for fire access, potential issues with HVAC maybe, and the standard stormwater condition. But there's three conditions that relate to conditional use and site plan issues that I'd just like to say a little bit more about. So under the conditional use, this is on the last page or two of the report, the second one really is one that came from or addresses some comments that were made at the workshop about controlling parking in the fire lane. And so that's really just to avoid and ensure there's no additional intensification or activity in that area that's closest to the neighbors. And just as an aside really, the conditional use conditions are focusing on impacts to the neighbors. So the second one is really around the potential impact of that new gym building. It's about 20 feet away from the property boundary. It's 95 feet by about 31 feet. So the issue really is around what level of screening is appropriate. So you'll see in the report, there was a proposal for a trellis, which in and of itself is large, but in the context of that wall, it's not so large. And so staff had a number of conversations internally about this and are recommending that the trellis is maybe not the most effective way to either screen or minimize the scale of that wall. And so in lieu of that trellis, the suggestion is that the upper part of the building use the materials to sort of maybe introduce a little bit of patterning to kind of break up the scale of it. And then there's a note in there from Jeff Tarling recommending some shrub, fairly high shrub planting between the fire lane and the property boundary. So that would address the conditional use element around introducing, the introduction of that large walled area in that particular location. And then the other piece, which relates to the same area but from a different viewpoint, which is really from the site plan viewpoint in terms of the user's safety and security under crime prevention through, crime prevention through design. Again, the concern there, and this has been thought about a little bit more since the workshop, is that you have a blank wall intentionally designed to be quiet and unobtrusive, but in being unobtrusive, it doesn't have any eyes on the fire lane and what's going to be potentially a Portland Trail and a bicycle byway, plus two emergency doors. So the thinking was really around looking at the lower level of the wall, which wouldn't, where any, anything that's introduced would not be seen by residents, but it would actually be the scope perhaps for making the area more positive, have it be a feature on these trails and byways. And I've suggested in the condition a number of ways, maybe murals or maps or other similar kind of structural elements that could be attached to the wall, so that you're creating a designed space that's purposeful and is a positive feature in that kind of what could be seen as a rear alley or a back alley. So that's a long-winded way of explaining that next-to-last condition under the site plan to do with the crime prevention through design. And so I think that covers my main points. Thank you.
Eugene, does the board have any clarifying questions for staff, for Jean at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'd love to hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Planning Board and Planning Board members, members of the public. We're very happy to be here this evening to hopefully get approval to move forward with this Lyssith school design. Everybody has worked really hard, staff here for the Planning Board, and I think some really good ideas came out of the-
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Steve Stoffman, Facilities Director.
Thank you.
Sorry. So the planning and the ideas that we heard here have been integrated through the architect who I'll introduce here in a moment. So everybody's listening, so I think that's what makes projects, you know, really fit the communities and to service our children in these school buildings. So with that, I would like to introduce Mark Lee with Harriman, the Lead Architect. With him tonight, with him this evening is Frank Crabtree, the Engineer. We have the Principal of Lyman Moore Middle School here with him, Mr. Ben Donaldson. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Steve. So we've got a very brief show, slideshow here, just to run through some of the highlights of the project. And so I'll go through a few of the slides here on, a little bit on the building. And then Frank Crabtree, the Civil Engineer on the project, will come up and run through some of the items on the civil side of the plan here. The building, actually, I'm going to move forward one slide and I'll come right back to this, but this is, this is as the school sits on the site right now. It's a backwards E or flipped E. The entrance to the building is where the hand is, right here. There's a parent loop and a bus drop-off loop in the front. And so there's a modular classroom that's in the, between two wings on the north side of the building. The existing fire lane exists right here and comes into that first courtyard. And so the, thinking about that E form or that flipped E form, the additions to the project are outlined with a dashed line, one being a gymnasium addition with a stage right here, a connector that comes down into a newly formed lobby in the building and a library along that as well. So that's the larger of the additions right here and sits right where that modular classroom is currently. The other addition is right along the front where the current entrance is, but it's an administrative offices to, situated to create a secure entrance into the building at the front of the building. And so it contains a reception area and the administrative offices, conference rooms, and nurse area. In addition to those two primary scope items, there are also phased renovations throughout the building, and those are highlighted in the blue color where the more intense renovations are. And then the lighter gray color, less intensive renovations, more to do with installing sprinkler system and fire alarm upgrades in those areas. So the impact on the site of the new additions, we just sort of overlaid where that addition of the entrance is right here. There's a small conference room that'll be removed in the area where the new administrative addition is going. And then there are courtyards created on the side, one by the library and one between the glass connecting walkway and the existing classroom wing right here. And those are gated areas on the sides to create internal safe zones, outdoor learning At this point, I'll invite Frank Crabtree up to walk through some of the site layouts and some of the other features of it. And then I'll come back and talk a little bit about that area that Jean mentioned adjacent to the wall of the gymnasium and the fire lane and retaining wall. Frank?
Yeah, I'm Frank Crabtree, Civil Engineer at Harriman. And as both Mark and Jean pointed out, the site issues around the building are relatively small, compact on the whole campus. As you can see on this drawing, again, the changes are basically in the two areas where the additions are going. Out here, we are moving the fire lane slightly, but away from the new building, up against the property line, right in this area, and then bringing it back in to where it is now. And the front, the same thing, the small administrative wing is pushing out. So the bus loop, which has been planned to be upgraded in the future, will be upgraded with this project, but it will be pushed slightly away from the building. There is quite a large green space, so it can slide into that fairly easily. The parent drop-off loop at this time will stay as it is, and then in the future will be upgraded as well. We'll be doing other upgrades around the building. The pavements, if any of you have walked around this building, are in really bad shape, cracked, and I think water, groundwater is an issue out there. So we're doing some improvements on stormwater, plus we're repaving all of the areas around the building. As Jean also mentioned, we're doing some work with the Portland Trails to make sure they have good connections, and quite of that, a bit of that came out during the workshop. So we've added those in as well, and I showed that on a different, a different drawing. This points out too that the area down around Junior Street was one of the concerns early on because this whole project had gone through permitting last year and actually was started. And this area was of major concern where Junior Street enters and the circulation around here, plus the stormwater that was going to be provided in this green space. So as we discussed how the project would unfold, this Junior Street intersection plus the stormwater off the roof, existing stormwater off the roof of the Lyssith School will need this detention pond to function properly. When its pipe is changed, because right now that pipe goes into the sanitary sewer, which is not a good idea, it needs to be separated out. So that was decided during the last permit, and we're going to be doing that. But in order to do that, we also have to put this on the same timeframe. So the schedule for constructing this area down in front of the middle school is on the same timeframe as constructing the site work for the elementary school. The area in between is another phase, and I can show you that. Whoops, wrong way. This is the modified phasing diagram when this was reviewed last year. Phase 1 was in here, a parking lot near the middle school and some storm drainage up along the side, and actually it wrapped up around the three sides of the elementary school. What got constructed last year was what's shown here in gray, Phase 1, some storm drainage work here, new sidewalk and some plantings, and this reconfigured parking area. Phase 2 at that time was intended to be the rest of the whole site here. But as we got into seeing the funds available and how this would play out, we decided that this area, and as I just mentioned, this area down here by Junior Street would be Phase 2. And then a phase, one or two phases would construct this center in the future, which is basically bus drop-off, parent drop-off divided, and a new configured parking lot that would add a few more spaces. That piece will have to be deferred until a later date. This is the circulation plan. The buses will come in, and this is when the entire project is completed, all the phases. Buses will come in and hug the curb line all the way up through both schools and then exit back out. The passenger drop-off vehicles will be separated by islands, and they will go parallel, and then they will circulate back out after they've dropped off. All of the blue lines are sidewalks or trails for pedestrians, bikes, whoever's using it. And the main Portland Trail would be this one that comes up along the side. It becomes, they use, share the use of the fire lane until they get back into here. Then they, there is a curved ADA accessible ramp walk that we're building here that would take people up to the next level to go out to, I think it's Bartley Street. And then also down around the back of the school, connecting out to, I believe it's Bramblewood out in here, and into some of the other trail networks. So we listened to what they were asking for upgraded sidewalks and configurations, and hopefully we've, we've got what they want here. We thought that, and in talking with Jean, and she did a great job of putting together a very, very detailed report, that for the sake of time, we would go right into the potential questions for conditions that she had outlined. And we listed nine of those items. She mentioned most of them just now. But we thought we'd walk down through them and just hit the highlights of how we believe we can answer them, or some of them we think have already been answered. The first one is the one about the wall in the back. So Mark, do you want to take a look at that?
Yeah, very good. So this, this is a, just a color depiction of the exterior north wall of the gymnasium. And so the stage is on this side of the volume. There are, there are two doors that are egress doors that you can see below the band. And the intent was to create a wall that was somewhat passive in its expression, and the idea was that we didn't want light trespass or even activity trespass noise onto the adjacent abutters because it touches up to the setback on that side of the site. And so for that reason, we have some modest amount of brick patterning to break up the expansive wall. And we introduced at one point in it, a trellis with, depicted here with quite a full growth on it. But I think that the concern, not necessarily as you receive it from this side, but the concern that Jean expressed from staff review was, was the experiential aspect of moving back and forth in that fire lane that's also incorporated into the trail system, and the sense of really making that feel more intentionally designed as a trail and not simply the back side of, and the dark side of the building. And so we were open to exploring what might be done below sort of that banded level right there with respect to some treatment that would not be observable from the adjacent properties, but also enliven that passageway a little bit. And just for the context, sort of the cross-section, dimensional cross-section through that area, this is the wall of the gym right here. We have 17 feet to the retaining wall, and there's a grade change shown here that's about 1.8, I think, feet. And then showing the setback, three feet to the setback, and then to a butters fencing there as well. So I think it's this idea right here that it's a fairly compressed, tight passage, and the idea that anything we can do to help make it feel safer, brighter, more welcoming, I think was the intention. Frank?
Yeah, the third one that we noted was parking in the fire lane, and the intent was that they would try to discourage. Now, probably I should, let me see, yeah, I should hit this one first because this is, the fire department was asking of how did they get access to this fire lane since they can't come up this one-way out lane, which is a straight shot. They would be coming up behind school buses, up behind parent vehicles. So we initially said that coming through the parent loop was quite a bit easier because the turn is a lot broader and there's nothing in the way. But they also felt they needed access from the loop that's closest to the building, the bus loop. And so that's what this shows here, is the fire truck size, turning, crossing a little bit of this lawn area right in here. It's hard to see, but the lawn projects out into here. And then moving through the gate. And the gate, we had to move back. We had the gate down here, so there would really be virtually no place for anybody to kind of sneak in and park while they're waiting or dropping or picking up somebody. But now the gates moved quite a bit further back. So that's what this question was, was asking. So we moved the gate back and we added, or we moved two no-parking fire lane signs, one over here, one over here. One of the other items that was requested was, the fire department said, as long as you don't have any vertical objects, signposts or benches or things like that. This happens to be the memorial garden that the school has, but the thought was that they can move those vertical obstacles ahead after we finish disturbing this area and stay out of this area. And that would make the turn, you know, available for a fire vehicle. We proposed originally to do some hardening of this surface with either pavers or something, but the fire department felt that the, you know, a good firm soil for what little bit of their truck happens to cross this area versus the rest of the pavement wasn't an issue. So that's just basically going to be grassed. The other thing that this shows too, there was a question about how somebody on the Portland Trails coming up through here would make it past the gate. So we have them coming up through, entering the fire access. If the gate is open, they just go right through. If the gate is closed, we've got this eight-foot-wide pass around on the side that bikers, pedestrians can easily move through. Photometric plan was enhanced with the light poles that were mentioned. So we added five light poles. There's two here at the front entry, bus loop, and there are three along this side over here, which is staff parking, but it's also quite a, an area where a lot of people move in and out of the building, back to the playground, et cetera. So it's, and it also butts up against the sports fields. So those five lights are in the project, and this is the photometrics plan. One of the things that was pointed out in Jean's report was a, another pole, an existing one, that was right down here on the corner of the, the access from the parking lot in the middle school out to this road system, seems to be missing on the plan, and it is. The survey never picked it up. We didn't really know it was there, but we looked at the drawings, I mean, the photos we took, and there is a pole, and I believe it's the same one. In Phase 1, they must have moved it because they widened this drive in Phase 1 that was done last summer. The pole was moved over eight or 10 feet, I would guess, to a location right at the corner here. So we believe that that tall pole with its floodlights that it's had for years, lighting this area along with the pole right across from it, does an adequate job of lighting There were a couple of questions, one about stormwater maintenance agreement, and that is something that we're going to need to get into with the Public Works Engineering and get that put together. We haven't done that yet. Another question about the HVAC units on the roof, and that was shown in this site plan earlier. It didn't get put on this brand-new one that we finished with all these other questions, but there are, nothing has changed. There are two roof-mounted condensing units that really don't make a lot of noise to begin with, but the situation where they're located, they're actually down behind a parapet or a roof of a higher addition, so that they are blocked, any, any type of noise would be blocked from the neighbors. They're also quite a distance, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but they are quite a distance away. So we've, we've shown those. So we've shown those, and what Jean said in the report is any modifications to those would have to be rereviewed, and we don't intend to make any modifications to those. One of the questions, I don't know, Mark, if you want to look at this one, the revised lighting around the north side of the gym.
Sure, yeah. Just again, quickly to touch on the subject of the north side of the gym. So one of the things was thinking about the lighting, not only for safety, but also to enhance that area of that passageway and the consideration of either building-mounted or bollard lights in the vicinity of that. And so that's an area where currently we have four building-mounted lights, but we'll consider looking at something that provides a little more distribution of light along that edge of the passage as well. With that, I think that's the list of items that were brought to our attention of further consideration. And that will turn it back to you folks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Does the board have any clarifying questions for the applicant at this time? Bob?
I'd be concerned about the highlights with the neighbors nearby, so maybe bollard lights would work better. And that terrace with the planting, is that?
The trellis, yeah.
Trellis.
Yep.
Is that right next to the brick wall? Is that on the other side of the walkway?
Yeah, that's fixed to the wall itself. So it'd be just a very light wire trellis where planting material can attach to.
Oh, Austin?
I have a couple of questions or observations, and Jean sort of raised this awareness with me, the crime provision through design. And I wonder about, and this could possibly be for the principal, how you monitor off-hours activities in those areas on the other side. I know we're introducing this fence, which means that the police won't have the ability to loop this property and monitor that. And I'm sort of wondering, and I'm struggling with the fence as well. I'm looking at it, and it looks as if, I'm sorry, the gate goes from edge of sidewalk to edge of sidewalk, and an unauthorized car could simply drive around it. I'm not sure if that's the case or not, but that's what it looks like. It looks like a freestanding gate simply on the paving. And if it's appropriate to comment on the north wall, I like the idea of introducing some pattern in the masonry that's integral to the architecture. I know that Harriman did the Jewish Community Center, and the masonry's beautiful. It's part of the architecture, and I would sort of favor that rather than something applied, a mural or so forth. That's just my personal opinion.
Great, thanks. Any other clarifying questions for the applicant? Brendan?
It's not really going to affect anything. I'm just curious. Why can't a fire truck go down a one-way?
I think the idea was, every time I've been in the room with the fire department folks, they think they may be coming when the place is bedlam, like it often is when there's students and things changing, cars, buses everywhere. That was, I think, you know, the con-
But if that's the case, they wouldn't be able to get around the bus loop either, right? Bus is there or car? Okay, I'm just, it's-
I know. I think if there was nobody around, they would go wherever they could go, but-
Okay. It's not going to affect anything. I just-
Any other clarifying questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Seeing none, we'd like to open this up for public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, and we'll answer your questions and comments at the end of the public comment period. Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we will go to board deliberation. Is there any additional questions for staff at this time from board members? Okay, we've workshopped this, and I think we've covered, you answered your questions, Austin. Brendan?
So I just want to be clear, because people opined about it. Under, what? Yeah, under the motions, there is no trellis. So I just want to make sure that was clear for everyone. Okay.
Okay, if there's no objections with that, I'll entertain a motion. That's it. Sorry.
I second Austin's comments about the bricks.
Great.
On the basis of the application plans, reports, and other information submitted by the applicant, findings and recommendations contained in the Planning Board report for the public hearing on April 23, 2019, for application number CU 000496-2019, 175 Auburn Street, Lyceum School, relevant to Portland zoning ordinance section 14-78B1 and the testimony presented at the Planning Board hearing. The Planning Board finds that the plan is in conformance with the conditional use standards of the land use code, subject to the following conditions of approval. One and two as written.
Any further board discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
On the basis of the application plans, reports, and other information submitted by the applicant, findings and recommendations contained in Planning Board report for the public hearing on April 23, 2019, for application number PL 000481-2019, 175 Auburn Street, Lyceum School, relevant to the site plan ordinance and other regulations, as well as the Planning Board deliberations and the testimony presented at the Planning Board hearing. The Planning Board finds the plan is in conformance with the site plan standards and all other applicable provisions of the land use code, subject to the following conditions to be met as noted, one through five as written.
Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.